All this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you again for being here. And for your service. And thank you, those who are participating and attending in person and remote today. Let's go ahead and get started with roll call.
Sharon Wallace. Ellen Calvo. Philip Lindholm.
Here.
Lynn Larson.
Here.
Mark Herr.
Here.
Robert Estrada.
Here.
Philip Combs.
Present.
You have corn.
Thank you, Mr. Devereaux. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting?
Move approval is sent. Second.
By vote. Move to approve by Mr. Larson, a second. Sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor. Hi. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Let's see here, approval of minutes, agenda items, we have. You want to walk us through, I know we had a change from last meeting that we pushed something back. And is that coming up today?
What you see tonight, oh, I'm sorry. Turn it over, Mr. Chair, I apologize. No changes to tonight's agenda, but yes, there was a topic, if you recall, last time. The HB 1110 middle housing presentation we were going to have from the consultant. That will actually happen on the 19th.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started with public comment, which is different from. Hearing, we have no hearing tonight. And so we did have some people who are interested in sharing some public comment. My screen isn't quite up yet, so I don't know if there's anyone online. But let's go ahead and start with the people who signed up on our sign in sheet. Looks like we only have one, that's Ms. Claus, Christina. Welcome again.
I'm new to this whole thing, but I know that there's no public hearing. But I can still take one stab at changing your minds on the RTA expansion, right? That's, I can still speak to that?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, okay, excellent. Okay, my name is Christina Claus, I live in Lakewood. I'm a small business owner and I work in the schools that feed from the downtown business district. Okay. Hear me out, my opinions aren't my own, and I'm actually not against new development in the downtown corridor. In fact, I think that new developments can do the following. One, increase the variety of opportunities by encouraging or incentivizing growth. Two, strengthen the city's economic base by encouraging more efficient use of existing land. Three, allow and encourage a variety of housing options that can promote live-work arrangements. Four, help provide employment opportunities closer to home. Five, accommodate and support alternative modes of transportation. Transportation, including transit, walking, bicycles, reducing reliance on automobiles. And making specific centers more pedestrian oriented. Six, development can help the central business district to become the central hub and focus of the greatest level of growth. And activity in our city. Seven, development will grow the central business district and fulfill the vision of a thriving center of regional significance. And distinctive, connected, livable, and healthy place. Offering a wide range of opportunities for all people to live, work, invest, and fulfill their potential. I think we all agree that that is a potential profit of developing in the downtown area. I believe, like the commission believes, that we need to do these things in order to see a thriving downtown. However, all seven of those points are pulled directly from the city of Tacoma's municipal code regarding mixed-use development regulations. The city of Lakewood is asking to expand the RTA where the tax exemption for MFT or tax incentive for MFT may be used. But the city of Lakewood is not requiring mixed use within these permits. They're not requiring it. All of those things that we want to see happen, they're not requiring it. We will never achieve any of the above if we do not force mixed-use development. We will only end up with more big box apartment complexes. We even heard developers speak to this at the February 19th meeting. That's not what any, I believe, any of us want. We want to see those seven things happen, and the only way to do that is by forcing mixed use within the permits. Please, when you vote, or whatever it is that you guys do today, vote no. Encourage the city to be more creative. Encourage the city to look for a thriving mixed-use downtown. That's all, thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Spear, I don't know if anyone else is able to see, but my display isn't bringing up anything, so I don't know if we have anyone online.
I'm sorry, we do. Mr. Green, would you like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Are the monitors not showing you anything?
No.
Nothing.
Hard monitors are not on.
Mr. Green, did you wish to speak? Not reacting, so I guess the answer is no, Mr. Chair. I apologize, I'm not sure what's going on with the monitors, normally that's an automatic connection for the system.
Is our comprehensive plan amendment reduction, is that probably going to require a screen for that?
Yeah, and I'm wondering if either a smart screen could help, or. You sit out here while I talk, so you can see the big screen, I know that's not ideal.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
I apologize.
All right.
Or we could check, we could take a five-minute break and see if we could get a smart screen up for you.
I'm fine sitting out here, not wasting any time, that's all right. Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, so we officially have closed the. Public. Comment, period. But what about our hearing, we, didn't we extend open, extend the opportunity for people to?
So, Mr. Chair, I would suggest, first of all, that you close public comment for this evening.
Public comments closed.
Thank you. And then in terms of the public hearing, we did have the extension by Planning Commission at the last meeting, February 19th. To noon today, March 5th, for the MFT program, there were a couple of amendments, if you recall, to the program itself. And then the discussion of a number of residential target area map expansions, including the one in CBD that was just testified about. That closed today at noon, and so that hearing now is automatically closed based on the action you took last time.
Great.
And if you don't mind, I can just let you know that where we're at with that process is, since it did just close today. Before March 19th, so in your next packet, there will be a table that summarizes comments from everyone, either testifying live or in, in writing. And we will provide city responses to all of those to you. So you're welcome to talk as much as you like about the issues tonight, but just know that that would be coming to you at the next meeting before you would take action.
All right, thank you, and before, before we jump in, maybe I will open it up for discussion, but first, Mr. Larson.
A question about that process, if we have input, will it be addressed by the city in the same document? Because does the noon deadline apply to further information and discussion from us?
No, this is simply the response to the public comments that were received during the public hearing. Planning Commission, you can talk about it tonight, you can talk about it on the 19th. I would recommend not taking action tonight because the public comment responses from the city aren't in front of you yet. But you could take action on the 19th, or you could extend longer should you want it.
I would suggest that we take one action, wait till all the information is in, we can digest it appropriately.
Yeah.
And at, at some point in, I have a point of in point that I would like to discuss. I don't know if now is a good time to do that, or not, or what.
Let's, let's discuss the MFT first, and then we'll, I'll open it up, and then we can move to the next thing on the agenda. And I'm, I'm, I'm open to hearing everyone else's thoughts. Anyone else, you've heard Mr. Larson suggest potentially pushing it back, letting us have a chance to take action on all of them at once. Is there anyone who feels like we need to address it, or want, want to vote on it tonight? I think we could talk about it tonight, but I, I, does anyone want to make a motion to, to vote on it tonight? All right, well, then let's go ahead and save, save the vote for another day, and I think we could put it on the agenda for the 19th. With the opportunity to extend further if we don't feel like we're quite there yet. There was a lot of public comment last time, and, and, and comments from the hearing, and so love to get any feedback. You've had a chance to probably read through, there was a few more that came in today, so if you didn't get a chance to see it. There are a few more in your inbox. Anyone have any thoughts or reactions, or things they want to share with the council after digesting and hearing what happened last time?
Mr. Chair, after hearing the testimony and reviewing the written testimony that was submitted. I think one thing that, at least I find to be very clear, is that with regards to specifically the Gravelly Lake extension of the RTA. To match the central business district boundary. I think the desire for development is live and well. It's just how that development is conducted is where I, I think there's a little bit of friction, if you will. And I think we need to find a way to recommend to the city council to move forward with that intent. But possibly, there needs to be some additional verbiage, and. I think it might be the intent of the council unsaid for a priority to be on mixed-use development. But there is no specific driver for that type of development, or a tag, if you will, that requires it. I don't know, I, I know it's not a zoning issue because it's the central business district, there's already zone for mixed use. I, I think, as, after you think about that, when you say, okay, well, well, you want to say. If the MFT, MFT is going to be utilized, then make it for mixed use. The problem with that is mixed use isn't suitable everywhere that the MFT might be utilized. So having that discretion for the council members is really important. But I think somewhere, we've got to find a way to explicitly state that intent of the mixed-use environment. I don't necessarily know what that, what that lever looks like, but I think until we have the answer to that. I think that particular extension, probably, I would like to see it tabled until we can figure out what that is.
Good comments, appreciate it.
I believe I'm hearing. A miscommunication, not from us, but from the public. Not in my backyard, high-rise apartments. But in regards to the Gravelly Lake area, it's already zoned.
Correct.
It's already zoned for that, so, and I guess some people don't understand that, that it's already zoned for that. In fact, there's development, the, the one that, the gentleman that spoke last, last time, he was already, they're already developing. They're going to develop a, an apartment complex in the area down there. But he'd like to get the multiple tax exemption, so I understand that, but it's already zoned. So people who are saying that if we stop this MFT, we will stop the building, no.
I don't.
Not if the developer wants it. So I think we have to somehow educate the public from that perspective, so it's already zoned for that.
Certain.
And I didn't realize, I thought that. The mixed use was not zoned for that area.
It is, central, the entire central business district is zoned for mixed use.
Then we need something else that we need to publicize that.
So it can be built there today, the, the question is, should it be incentivized if that?
Exactly.
Should we drive that if that's not the type of development that, that's the type of development we want to incentivize? And so some of that conversation came up with the overlays, for instance, the Colonial Plaza overlay. There are some, and Ms. Talbo has spoke at length about this before, about specific design elements. Which you do get inside of the central business district, but it's, it's not as clearly defined as an overlay might be. And I don't know if that looks like an entire Gravelly Lake Drive overlay, potentially. What is the 30-year plan for that? Is that going to be the Boulevard one day? Do we, are we looking that far ahead and thinking like that? I, I think that's, that's my perception from the comment that we've been getting, not that. You know, what, there, if mixed use is allowed or not, it is zoned for that already, and we know that, but. Do, if we're going to incentivize and, and take something away from the city to, for that development to happen. Then we should get the end product and the end state that I think is desirous.
Any, any other comments, any other thoughts? I don't want to, I want to be last, so I don't dilute it.
The, the nature of the RTA extending down Gravelly Lake Drive. Is really not problematic, as I have explained it to the, the property owners that have had questions of me. But as, as it exists today. But I wonder if the multifamily that is, for instance, on the southerly side of Gravelly Lake Drives. That runs east and west, just south of Clover Park High School. While those properties currently have the advantage of being. A component of low, low-income housing, and, and that's certainly an advantage in Lakewood. But if those buildings were torn down, then would the new density limits of RTA be allowable? In that zone, in, in that area, and if so, I think that that's a problem, and that's an error. So I would like to make sure that, that the. The zoning stays at a low density in that area, because to put high density up against Clover Creek. Would be wrong, and we just want to protect against that. And I also would like to say that we saw. Mixed-use development in the city of Furcrest. Require. A. They actually required a commercial use of the ground floor in order to have apartments above. And it killed the development of that plan, and it's still vacant today. Because you can't legislate, you can't legislate to mark, mark it. But I do like your perspective about incentivizing it. So if there's a manner in which we can incentivize it, so that we want to build it and they will come, I think that's good thinking.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Larson. Ms. Wallace?
I just wanted to agree with what Mr. Larson said, I think that incentivizing the mixed-use development is really important. But I don't want to dictate that, because I think that you'll end up with a better product. Sorry. But I, I do share those concerns, and I, I would like, I like the incentive idea.
Thank, thank you, all, all great thoughts so far, Mr. Lindholm and Ms. Talbo.
I found myself going in a slightly, I guess, down a little of a rabbit hole. And myself going back to the 28, the original downtown plan, that's from 2018. Because I had questions about, well, if the boundaries were established. For the downtown, through the downtown plan. Then what in the planning process occurred at that time through the public outreach or otherwise? That determined the boundaries of the RTA. And I didn't get to get as far as I wanted to, in my review of it, but. What impressed me about the planning effort at that time was the. Was the type of public outreach that was done intensively through that plan. There was a developers forum, there was apparently design shredding with the community, there were open houses, there was a lot of feedback collected. And although it's only been eight years later, which may seem like not a lot of time, but. I do think that significant things have happened in eight years. The market has changed alone in that very short timeframe. COVID just, COVID in and of itself just changed the way we get around and rely on businesses and shopping and et cetera. So it did have me wondering what the plan is to update the, the 2018 plan. And I'm interested to know what the scope of the update is, because what I heard from the testimony that we listened to. And the comments that are online and the conversations that are outs, that are also online, but in a less formal forum. Is that. People are interested and concerned in. Not just the use, but the form, the physical vision of what the downtown looks like. The allowable building heights, the setbacks, the permitted, the, the allowable types of uses. The street treatments. Natural environment concerns, and so all of those, to me. Deserve, that input deserves, I think, another forum. Perhaps maybe some more shredding. And if that can be included in the update, where the people that came out to, to. The, the, you know, it was, it was amazing to see the turnout that we got for the public hearing, but also the conversation that's happening about this. Because to me, it's assuring that the community cares. And the community feels like they have a stake in, in what their city looks like, and that's great. And we want to, you know, this body, we want to hear more of that, but our electeds want to hear that. And so I feel that the, through the update process of the downtown plan, it deserves. Some thoughtful. Public outreach that allows this conversation to continue, so that the electeds can then make a better informed decision about. This, the, how the community sees the real suitability in terms of the physical aesthetic and a physical quality. And, and a, a real building sense, a real buildability. Then they can make that decision about the true boundaries of the RTA and the, and the downtown. So in that sense, so I, I'm kind of agreeing, I do agree with Mr. Herr in postponing this, in recommending postponing this decision until. Maybe getting through that update process to have a more engaged and true. More face-to-face conversations with the community, and also. You know, also demonstrate and show what the forms look, what the, what the, what our form code, our form-based code looks like. And if there's options to change that, or adjust that, or amend that, what do those options look like? Because I think that people having a visual and being able to participate in influencing those visuals, that is what, I think. Really resonates.
Thank you. Ms. Lindholm, you change your mind?
No.
All right. Yeah.
It's interesting to note that our comments and comments we've received are all about Gravelly Lake. But the RTA proposal extension is just spring group, and it's Silicon Boulevard. But no comments, and he's no, either way. I don't know what to think about that, either they didn't get the word that it's happening. Or in some cases, they're maybe marginalized and don't think they have a word anyway. Springburg, for example, so. I don't know, are we just, because we have no inputs, we, do we dig deeper and find out? Make, ensure that they have, remember, I remember. We council made another decision. And the word was reading here about this, so they had to back off because the word didn't get out. I'm just wondering, is the word getting out, does?
Ms. Spear?
Sure, so yes, there were actually physical mailings sent out before the public hearing around all of the proposed areas across the city. Within 300 feet of the boundary, so not only the Gravelly Lake residents and businesses receive notification, but throughout the city, all of the RTA proposals.
Okay, and, and. Yeah, and I would say that, that, you know, I've effectively seen people rally around a cause. And sometimes you can have a blanket policy that, you know, that people aren't opposed to, but localized. You know, you can get support that is against something, and see that nationally and regionally. But I, I think that's a little bit of the case here as well, doesn't mean that everyone's in agreement everywhere. But where we've seen the most voice has been on Gravelly Lake, and so I've, I, I think that's notable to me at least is. You know, as I'm looking at which ones to approve. As you guys know, I'm an advocate for seeing. Development happen in strategic and smart ways. Anything that'll help lift the whole community, and that's usually what the economic development, you know, component is. It adds jobs and housing, can add commercial, and to Mr. Herr's point. You know, waiting, I think, is, is, is a good call, we've got some time, we've got a whole nother meeting. I did, I did want to get everyone's thoughts on this. Ms. Talbo, I, I appreciate where you're coming from. I think that this exercise is really focused on the RTA boundary approval. And so to say, let's, let's go through this whole strategic plan for this, for the city downtown area. I probably pull back a little bit because we, it's a very big lift, and it takes a lot of work. It's not that it can't be done, but for something that is, in my opinion, not a downtown plan. Like you said, it's already been approved, the zoning's already there, and if the public outcry is, we need to change zoning. Then that maybe is something we could look at and, and approach it that way, but I, I don't know that I would hold up all the rest of it. Or all of it for that, that would be my, that would be my take. The MFT does work, we see it work, I know there's, there's always dissenting opinion. But if you, we look around regionally at all the cities that are using it, it's effectively used in many cities. And there are some cities that have pulled back on it, ones I've worked with and who have offered it before, but they also. Lack some of the political leadership that the other cities do have, or administrative leadership. So I would not try and pitch my wagon to any of the cities who. Aren't understanding it, or don't know how to utilize it. I would look at the ones who are successfully implementing it and try and see if there's something from there that we can learn. And I wouldn't say that anyone who's using it, we want to emulate exactly. I think we want to customize it for us, and, and that's why the way it's written, it, you know, that's why when we talked about this before, we excluded smaller buildings. Let's not create an administrative hassle for people over the smaller, and I've seen it take up a lot of time. That, so we have a policy custom to our city right now. The commercial aspect, and I, I'm, Lynn, I'm glad you brought that up. I am familiar with multiple projects throughout the region who have suffered. And struggled because they could not get a, a, a physical tenant in there, it was not economically viable, no one would do it. And that was after the project was done. And that is not good for the community, a vacant space for years is terrible for vitality and energy and so on. I know we all want to be able to control what product goes out. I know we all want to be able to control what product goes out. We don't get to do that. Our, our code does. And so we get, we get the guidelines and residential criteria that they have to meet. But we don't get to choose who gets to do what project. Unfortunately, that's, you know, if we all did, we would make every decision for every kid we have too. And we might choose differently than they did. But each property owner also has rights and I'm very cognizant of that and I don't want to say, well, just because we don't want it. In our backyard right now, or we're not a hundred percent in alignment, that it's not good for the whole. I personally am. I'm waffling a little bit on the best approach with gravelly lake because I think there is enough commentary out there to make it feel like. Not all of it, it took to Mr. Estrada's point, not all of it's completely informed because these are outright zoned areas for this. These projects can happen tomorrow with this zoning. This is really a matter of RTA boundary. And RTA, the the MFT is entirely in there for incentivizing economic development. So with all that said, I, I guess I'm just putting my commentary out there that I think it's worth further consideration. And I do have reservations on gravelly lake area and I think there's ways that. One thing I would like to do is try and figure out a way we can. Better understand or better package or better proceed so that we're not just putting it on hold because. Could be years before something like that happens and these projects and opportunities could completely disappear. And it wouldn't surprise me if they did. But I think, how do we proceed in that area with? Now maybe a greater deal of attention and. Do, I do like the idea of commercial in there. If I could do it and magically make it happen, that would be my choice as well. But I I do have concerns, like concerns that they actually don't work, that they don't pencil, they don't happen or that they sit vacant, so. Just stuff to think about, not, I know we're not voting on it today, but just kind of food for thought and. You know, anyone else have any commentary before we move on? I'm glad to hear it.
Mr. Chair, just one last comment. I think there's a difference between trying to control an outcome and creating the conditions for success.
Agreed, yeah.
I think those are two wildly different scenarios and. It does require an immense level of consideration. Before a decision is made because some decisions, once they are made and executed, there is no going back. Pausing a project and and a delay is one thing, totally killing a project is another and totally killing development is another. All that to say, all development is not good development. We create the conditions we want for the, what we hope a desired outcome looks like. And we drive towards those goals. Again, we're not the ones developing and spending money. Other folks have to do that piece, but we're going to create a framework that that makes sense for the city. To allow those projects to happen and I think that's. That's why this body exists with with the city council to to make those decisions. In the appropriate manner.
Yeah, agreed. And and you did bring up the, just the concept of overlay and that's something we. That could be part of the solution process. I just don't want to, I don't want to volunteer up a bunch of things and have us go down, but I do, I think that could be one of those ways of doing it. Ms. Talbo?
Yeah, I also just, one final comment. I didn't get to. Express at other meetings is. One of the things that came up for me that I, that also kind of piqued my interest and concern a little bit is that. Currently don't have a traffic impact fee ordinance that is appropriate to. Adequately address the impacts of density or. Of of, you know, proposed uses that are wanting to come in and and I think that that's another reason. Why this decision could merit more time because whether or not. The RTA boundary is extended. If develop, you're right, the zoning is there. So if development wants to come in there, we're basing. Trip generation on. The last known. Traffic or use, change of use, which, and there's so many old buildings along gravelly lake, but not, and even Bridgeport too. That, so essentially you're living with, you're basing your traffic impacts on. Fifteen, twenty, thirty, even forty year old trip generation. And to me, that's just. A little. A little wild. Because we should be able to, you know, we should be. Assessing fees and I don't want to get into the whole, that's a whole nother discussion, but it should. Development should pay for its impacts. It's fair share.
I. I agree, I'm, I'm not. Not sure that. Cause if if someone comes in for a project, do we re-study? All of our zoning and and fee structure before we review to move forward and so. I don't disagree, I actually like the idea of looking at the traffic impact. I just. I I'm trying to put first things first and trying to figure out is that? Do we just layer on study and and review before that and so? And again, I don't have the solution today, but I, that that's that kind of reservation I have.
Aren't we considering the traffic impact fee program later this year?
Yeah, it's, it is, it's got to come back up. We, we did put it on, we put pause on it because it wasn't effectively working and so. We're hoping to come back with. Ideas on how to make it work again and so we could start it back up and effectively use it. And agree that that is a priority and this would be, you know, multifamily housing would be a contributor for sure. Miss Spear.
If I could respond to a couple of the comments tonight, just to give some facts, I'll be as neutral as I possibly can. And I I might jump around a little bit to try to remember. First of all, the transportation mitigation fee for the downtown. Last year, you recommended and the council accepted, accepted the recommendation to stop using the the administrative policy that said. Doesn't matter how long ago the last use was in there, we're going to go off of that with a net change. There's a new admin policy in place which limits it to one year. And so that is a significant difference in and of itself. However, the work that you're talking about to reexamine that overall. It will happen. I don't know if it will be this year or next because it's waiting for. The downtown transportation system analysis that that federal grant is supposed to fund. The federal grant is pending change in administration and what's happening at the transportation agencies at the federal level, but. That is the step one to take a look at what is the stasis or status quo of. Both motorized and non-motorized transportation in the downtown and hopefully beyond that as well. And then based on that. Taking a look again at that administrative policy as well as our code for the mitigation fee. And figuring out what needs to change to make it work better and more effectively to help fund the needed project. Jumping back to some of the comments about the downtown versus the RTA program, just to clarify. Residential target areas and the multifamily tax exemption are in the finance part of our code and it, they predate. Across the city, they predate any of the subareas and it has been in place in the city, I, I want to say at least fifteen years. And so, yes, there is an RTA within the central business district zone. But it is again predating anything to do with that subarea plan. So. If you were to try to look in the, in the public outreach and see what conversation was had, there was none. It was two separate things. And at the time, the RTA and the MFT program was kind of sitting on its own for a while unchanged. Within the last four or five years, there've been a number of times that the council has looked at, do we need to update the maps? Of the RTA areas and that's where we sit tonight now as a result of that conversation. The downtown subarea itself has, as has been mentioned, is from twenty eighteen. The only change that's happened to it since is what happened last year of adding that nine parcel southern boundary change that was rezoned. Everything else is the same as when it was first adopted, which was seven years ago now, if I'm doing the math right. Or eight years and so the. Need to talk about the policies in there, the regulations that implement those policies, the. CIPA planned action, which is the analysis the city did to say assume full build out. So individual projects don't have to go through the CIPA review is all the same as it was in twenty eighteen. Whether and when we can take a look at that plan and those policies and update. I, again, I don't think it would be this year because part of the discussion internally has been, let's look at the motorized analysis, that system. And see how that also needs to change what's, what that plan calls for. I would also point out that within both. The subarea plan itself, those policies, but also the comprehensive plan, mixed use is encouraged. It is recognized as something that people wanted in the public outreach process and it's also in the policy language. So again, I I very much appreciate the conversation tonight about how to take that and actually implement it. Meaning is it a requirement? Is it an incentive? Is it everywhere? Is it in some areas? But all of those discussions at this point for the downtown subarea plan, maybe we're looking in. Second half of twenty six or even later because we're waiting on that transportation analysis first.
When do we expect that analysis to be done?
Mid to late next year.
And then late next year.
It's going to depend first and foremost on if we get our dollars out of the the new administration.
We, we could spend a lot of time just talk, round tabling this, so I, just for sake of time, I'm gonna say let's. Wind it down unless there's anyone who really feels like they need to.
Different subject.
Mr. Estrada.
Comments, I'd like to hear commissioners' comments on the proposed extension, twelve year extension. For projects that already have an eight or twelve year exemption.
I'll, I'll let everyone, I'll let everyone else chime in on that for.
Mr. Chair, can you clarify the, the question?
So that there's a currently a property that has a MFT on it and it's coming up. And they're looking to extend it. Further.
I, I believe there are specific guidelines already set out in code that that have to be met in order to qualify for an extension. Right? And if they. Is that something where if our project meets those requirements, is there still a question on whether they would receive that?
Miss Spear, can you, can you let me know is, is the extension, that's a newer thing, right? That used to not be an option.
There is. The option at this point is to have an aid or a twelve year. Program initially assigned, if you will, or approved for a project. What's being proposed in this current update? And I'm sorry, you can't look at this necessarily, but it's on page six of the memo for tonight. But it's saying that if you are in a particular area, not all of the downtown, because there is that tax increment area. That also covers part of the, of the boundary area. If you are providing affordable housing, at least twenty percent of your product is affordable housing within your project. You could qualify for an additional twelve year extension of that program. So that, that is the new question. Is that something that the planning commission wants to recommend to council?
Mr. Chair, if I may, that's always discretionary, yes?
That is up to the council to decide and agree to, or the program to decide, yeah.
I believe there's also some other caveats to that, the, the original exemption. They have to meet. An advisory requirement to ensure that utilities and things are still staying in appropriate ranges compared to. Median incomes, there's, that's a pretty robust set of requirements, I believe.
The multifamily, they have to, you have to re-up on all of your. Data, you're, basically you're confirming people's AMI. And yeah, you do have to check the utility rates and that they're in, in the right package.
I speak in favor of the extension. It does little harm, if any.
Can, can you elaborate on?
Yes, the amount of the tax. Exemption that City of Lakewood would not receive by allowing it is reasonably nominal. Doesn't have a real adverse tax income impact on the city. And and the state of Washington promulgated the opportunity to have the exemption and it's the largest. Component part of the tax, of the tax base, so. And it seems just to be good for all concern. We provide housing for people that need it and instead of to do that and. It's a percentage of a project and it makes people feel welcome and it's a good thing to do for the community.
So it sounds like you'd be. Supportive of it if it were to extend an affordable housing component, or are you saying it would be something you'd support if it? No matter what?
Well, they, to just simply extend the exemption as it currently.
Okay, alright.
And and to be a twelve year extension, it would have to be an affordable. It would have to meet those guidelines.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, twenty percent.
Kind of hard to believe and I don't have the figures that no tax for twelve years is nominal. I'm not a finance guy, but twelve years no tax doesn't seem very nominal to me.
I, I. I, I think, you know, this is just, this is just the. My take on it, but. The incentive. To do an MFT or the reason you do MFT is to get it built, to have a reason to be able to make it pencil. If you already have the building. The only other incentive is to provide a affordable housing component because you already have the development. And so. I personally think, you know, if they've already got the extension and our extension and or the abatement, tax abatement. I would, I would suggest taking it and I, I do, I agree with Mr. Estrada. I think it actually is pretty significant and undeveloped. Or an under performing property built up to its maximum use. Provides a great deal of potential income that we've waited to get and so I would. I'd like to start paying it back. If we got something else for it that, you know, the city benefits from directly. I would be more open to it. But I mean, this is just a fiscal responsibility kind of part of my brain I can't turn off, which is. I feel like, hey, we've given them what they needed to make the project pencil. It's up to them to keep it going. So that would, that would be, and, you know, I know not everyone's going to be in agreement, but I, I would be up for. Anything good to help it get started. But a- any of those lot, twenty years of abatement is what they're offering for. In the state for low income projects. Which we heard from the community last time is not what everyone's after, which is going to be a little more economically built, straight. It's not going to be very. May, may not be the nicest looking project from the outside, which we heard a lot about and so I think that. Those are the reservations that I would have on it, but not to, yeah, go ahead.
One, one thing that seems to me that would be valuable in that program would be to have it phase out. So that you start in year six and gradually change and let the tax abatement go away over a period of time so that it doesn't. Provide a sudden income shock to the, the property owner to have all of a sudden have to start paying taxes and they come back and cry again and. And say, gee, what a big hit this is. We had a phase out program. It would evade that danger from occurring.
That's an interesting, I have not seen that before and I don't even know. Is that something, Miss Spear, that we, are we allowed to create a program like that?
I don't know, I'd have to do some research in state law.
I wouldn't be opposed to that idea, only from the transactional side where. A lot of revenue that's generated is also transactional. So if you build a building and it's now, you know, went from being. Nothing to forty million dollars, you get tax revenue on the sale. And so if it changes hands, that's a good thing for. The city and for, can be a good thing for the city and community because. That turnover generates some revenue as long as it's going into good hands, which people are investing that much money, have an incentive to protect it.
I admit that perspective may have been a bit idealistic.
Alright, well, I do, I don't dislike the idea of just, you know, making it palatable because that does help with transactional side of it. I know that wasn't, it wasn't your intent, but certainly makes sense from that.
I thank the commissioners for their feedback.
Well, without any further ado, if it's okay with you, let's go ahead and sit down here and we'll just take the first rows and let you. Take the microphone.
I do apologize, we'll, we'll figure this out before the next meeting, so you don't have to do this.
We, we can still be friends. We we can still be friends.
All right, so what we're talking about tonight is about half of the now 12 comprehensive plan amendments that are going to be in front of you for a public hearing on April 2. And on the 19th, we'll take the remainder of those to you as introductory again. And then, as I just said, the public hearing is actually scheduled for April 2 at this point on the 25 comprehensive plan docket. So there were originally nine that were approved through resolution last fall by the city council, all of which you see, well, six of which you see here. There was the co-living housing and what that, what does that mean per state law? There's the, get that out of the way. There's updates related to climate change and resiliency to the capital facilities, parks, and utilities element of our comprehensive plan. There's middle housing regulation updates, again, per state law. There's a definition and consistency in our regulation changes that are needed to deal with multi-unit residential buildings. I'll explain that a little bit better in a moment. There's changes to residential parking to be consistent, again, with a recent state bill. Then there's talking about civic uses, and this amendment, it's still the same number as it was when council approved it, but it has changed in scope, and we'll be talking about that next time as well. Then we had number seven, which is the adoption of the Commute Trip Reduction Plan. I'll explain that again in a few moments. There are a total of two rezone requests this time. One is private and one is from the city. So number eight there that you see is the privately requested one regarding a parcel that right now is exclusively zoned industrial, but the property owner has requested that the previous split zoning be reinstated. That was done originally and through 2019, I believe. 2025-09 was an analysis and a determination of whether any amendments were needed to the downtown subarea plan specifically to get ready for the regional center framework review that P S R C, Puget Sound Regional Council, will be doing this year and next year. The 10th is regarding another rezone. This is the one that the city council brought forward early this year because there was a purchase made of a parcel over by the old Q F C. And you've probably seen that now about half of that building's been taken down. That part that's been demolished is now owned by the city, and the intention there is to create a city park. So this is rezoning that parcel to open space and recreation. Then recently, there was a conversation had and a direction provided to staff to add a amendment to consider, looking at the minimum square footage for accessory dwelling units and whether that needs to change. And then there's a 12th one also that has been added, because there was one more state law change that the city needs to comply with before June 30 of this year, which is talking about allowing housing in quote existing buildings that are zoned commercial or mixed use in our city map, zoning map and our municipal code. So what we're doing tonight is talking about five or six of those. The rest of them, which are, for the most part, the more complicated ones, are coming to you on the 19th. So I'll just walk through these. And if any of you have questions, maybe we could have you come to the dais just, or sorry, to this podium, just so it's on the record, planning commission members. But 2025-01 is talking about making sure that the city allows co-living housing, which if you want to think of an older term, single-room occupancy or a room that doesn't necessarily have a kitchen, or in some cases, a bathroom in the living unit, but they are shared. That needs to be allowed by the city in every area of the city that allows six-plus units in multifamily. So there's also some restrictions on the regulations. We actually participated over the last year with the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership, or SHAPE, as they worked to create a temple, a temple, a template, model ordinance, excuse me, regarding this issue. And so that has been incorporated as draft language for this amendment. What you see here in very small print is changes that would happen in the code. So there would, first of all, in the land use code show across the board for the residential zones that co-living housing is allowed. And then you see in the operating and development conditions, those regulations that are required per state law to be adopted and accompany the zoning allowance for this type of housing. The second one we're talking about tonight relates to the definition of multi-unit residential buildings. It's kind of a wonky one to change, but we needed to change our definition. These are existing buildings that have no more than three stories and have fewer than 12 residential units. They are excluded from the definition of multi-unit if one story is utilized above or below for parking or for retail space. So I'm not going to spend any more time on that one, other than to say it's a state change in the definition that we have to incorporate into our own code. So there you have it, the change in what a multi-unit residential building means. You'll see that in red line strikeout in the packet for this evening, as well as the public hearing. The third amendment for tonight is talking about residential parking configurations, needing to look and make sure that parking regulations are consistent with what is in state law now. And there are certain projects for either redevelopment or new development where this would not apply, particularly those needing to comply with the American with Disabilities Act, or A D A. And if you have an existing paved parking lot, you don't need to change the size of an existing parking space. If doing so during resurfacing would be more costly or require significant reconfiguration. So there's also a comment here that is interesting, and I I'm waiting to see if this is going to become more of the norm in some of the other residential regulations and bills that are coming down from the state. "The city may not require off-street parking as a condition," meaning on-site for a project or a residential project, "if compliance with the tree retention would otherwise make the proposal infeasible." So this is basically saying trees over parking. Yeah, and so this may become a theme in other laws going forward, but as as of now, this is something that we need to, we need to comply with in our own code. So amendments are in your packet about that. And you see, again, the red line strikeout. There's a new subsection G, which talks about everything that is needed in Title 18A, which is the citywide regulations. And then there's also some changes in Title 18B, which is specific to downtown, and 18C, which is specific to the station district subarea. The next one is numbered 2025-06. And again, this is originally just going to bring the regulations that used to be in our code, but in 2019, when the entire code was updated and rewritten, were mistakenly left out. We were simply going to update them to make sure they were consistent again with regional policy or state law, and then just drop them right back in. But what has happened since then is there's been conversation about additional topics by our city council that we have added to the scope of this amendment. And some of those include talking about what does religious assembly or religious organization mean? And is that a civic use or not? It is where religious organizations can or can have assembly locations in different parts of the city, which land use zones. And whether or not religious organizations can have a property that they own or control, daycare centers. So all of that is going to be included in this amendment now. It's more than just we originally defined it to be. And that information shows you here, a summary, that it's bringing in the old code that's been updated a little bit because it was out of date. But there's also some changes to what are allowed uses in our mixed residential one and two zones. It has a new civic use table in our code that explains where all the various civic uses are allowed. It does propose to allow community centers in the M R two, our mixed residential two, and our multifamily three zones. And then it would allow daycare centers in religious assembly structures owned or controlled by religious organizations in the mixed residential one and two zones. And I'll just say right now that this is a lot in a single amendment. And if there is a point in time where the Planning Commission would want to split this up, or we like certain parts of it, but we don't like other parts, and you would want to do kind of a mixed recommendation to city council, you have that ability. So just keep that in the back of your mind as well. Just a note, we're talking about in this amendment here, in particular, mixed residential one and two zones. Oops, that is actually what you see here in gold. So it's not very much of the acreage of the city. It's about 1%, a little over that, of the city where this change would apply. Then you see again in tiny print, but just for for the effect, you've got the new language that would be in our 18A. We would have a new use table, and you would have also some additional regulatory language added back into the code and added for all of this discussion regarding religious assembly, religious organizations, and daycare centers in those centers. So you see again, development and operation condition amendments. You'll see here in the commercial and industrial use table, the allowance of a community center in M R two and M F three zones. And then you'll see in the health and social services table, daycare centers being allowed in religious assembly structures, adding that to the M R one and two zones in this proposal. The next amendment for tonight is the Commute Trip Reduction Plan, and very high level, the city of Lakewood itself, as well as employee employers within the city that have over 100 employees, are required to have a commute trip reduction plan in place. And the city has, right now, a draft in front of you that was worked on in partnership with Pierce County over the last year or so. It's already been preliminary approved by the Washdott Agency Technical Committee that takes a look at these things. But it is something we need to do, and it has made its way through the first state-level review. It's just a matter of that local review happening as well. Just a timeline on the top left regarding this plan. We do need by June of 2025, so again, that June 30 deadline this year, to have the public comment period complete and the adoption of this new plan. The private request for rezone is here tonight, just as a high-level intro. This, we talked about a little bit, I believe, last fall, in order to get this in the docket. But just a reminder, the the parcel you see is the one that's circled in red. It's the line, the dark black line down the middle of that map on the right is the difference between Air Corridor One Zone, which is the one that's got the safety concerns from Fort, I'm sorry, from McCordfield's flight patterns. And then to the right of that line is industrial. And the way the city has dealt with this parcel historically, first it was split zoning, and then it was changed a few years ago to become only industrial. But we now have a request from the property owner to actually go back to the split zoning. And so this is in front of you for approval. The other rezone is the one I mentioned just a few moments ago regarding that new park that is the intention of the city to create over by Motor Avenue and the Colonial Plaza improvements that were recently made. This is a parcel that is located within the colonial overlay of the subarea, the downtown subarea. It is reflecting, this idea is reflecting Goal One out of the city council's 2025 and 2026 goals, which is to create a downtown park, at least one, and also potentially a community center. So this is step one. This is saying this parcel has been purchased by the city, and now it's rezoning to become an open space and recreation parcel. And then the final one for tonight would be talking about this idea of new housing in quote existing buildings. This is something that if the city does not take action itself to do, state law will preempt and will govern this question until Lakewood's code would be updated. But in all land use zones that allow four-plus units in a multifamily project, if there is a parcel with an existing building on it, meaning something that's been around for at least three years, then the, and it's commercial, there is a process by which it could actually have residential construction within it. And I'm not getting into a whole lot of detail here right now, but just that is the concept. It's another piece to the to the larger puzzle from the state legislature about how to get more housing built quickly and how to provide more than just single-family detached options out there for affordability's sake. But allowing existing buildings to be redeveloped in part or in whole that are currently non-residential, but they are located in a zone that allows multifamily, you would be able to convert that project in part or in whole to have housing within it. So this would be something that, again, would affect the use tables that we have in our code. And down there at the bottom, you see it's something that we would be required to allow through all of the zones listed there. And then there's, again, the the specific operating and development conditions that accompany that new use allowed in our tables. Where are we today versus when final action will be taken? This was just a very 50,000-square-foot level intro to some of these amendments. The next time we do this will be at our next meeting, and again, it'll be some of those meatier amendment topics, so we'll spend a little bit more time on this next time. And then April 2 is your public hearing. As of now, April 16 would be when you would take action on recommendations. But as always, you do have the ability, if you need to have more time before you take action, to extend your schedule out. If you take action on the 16th of April, then it would go to the city council starting in May. But if we need to move this, we have the ability at least to get to June 30 as the final action date by council. So that that might give you one, perhaps two more meetings, should you want them. And that is the end of the presentation, Mr. Chair. Do you guys want to come back up?
Thanks for the report, Ms. Spear. We have I don't see Mr. Bokey here tonight. Is he online? Okay. We have no report from city council liaison tonight. Is there any last updates from you, Ms. Spear?
No, thank you. Just see you in two weeks. And again, we'll be talking about the 25 comp plan, as well as the M F T E program and the R T A.
Sounds great. Mr. Larson, you had a comment?
For the good of the order, I, based on the presentation for the urban forest that we had, perspective of urban forest in the study that was done, I have done some additional research on the amount of impervious areas that served as my question as to their database that they did all their calculations from. And I've found quite a bit of access to that information. I've got preliminary assembly of it, but not final. So as I do it, I'll bring that back to for presentation to the rest of the commission here for discussion.
That'd be great. If you if you wouldn't mind sending it to Mrs. or Ms. Spear before, or, you know, so that we can get a chance to look at it before, that'd be great. Or if you just want to wait till the meeting of, we can get it on the agenda either way.
That's a really good idea, because she always has really good questions.
Yeah, she does.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Herr.
This last week, I was doing a lot of, a lot of reading, I guess, and just thinking about what we do here and other places that I that I'm at throughout the community. And it has occurred to me that every time we meet in this chamber, we sit in front of all these flags behind us. Of course, we have our our national colors and our state flag and our city flag. We have a flag representing each one of the services. And of course, we we have a great relationship with Joint Base Lewis McCord and the soldiers and sailors and airmen that live in the area and support our businesses and our community. It has occurred to me that we just jump right into business every time. I don't know if I can make the proposal or ask, make the request that we consider starting our meetings with an acknowledgement, possibly a moment of silence, and the pledge of allegiance, which is quite often done in informal settings such as this. I don't know if there was a reason why we do not do that, but I would like to make the proposal that we add that to our our daily business as we meet in this chamber.
Second.
Well, Ms. Spear, between this meeting and next one, do you mind looking into that? Is there a reason we don't? And is there any reason, anything that would prevent us from doing that?
Yeah, I can get that information.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Any other thoughts? Alright, if there's nothing else, this meeting's adjourned.